Hey, video's working. Now if we can just have it. Okay. All right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Finding and Zoning Commission meeting. I do apologize in advance for the delay as we were waiting for one of our members to join us. And now that we have a call, we can continue on. Before I do, Steve Biella, you are an alternate, but you will be seated for the entire meeting. And please, if you have a chance, can we have your video on? And this becomes important, Steve, because if you have questions or comments, just by me being here and looking up at the screen, if I can see you even waving your hand or, you know, putting, you know, hands up, then I'll know that you have a question or concern. And this way, we can all participate, okay? So, thanks for turning your video on. My name is Joan Beely. I'm the chairperson for the Finding and Zoning Commission. This meeting is attended in person and also by remote. For those of you who are zooming in, I ask that you mute yourself. If you do come to a point where you'd like to address the commission, then you can unmute, identify yourself in the name of the dress, and share your comments. We also ask that you mute when you're not speaking or addressing the commission so that we can have a clear recording of testimony that's being taken, and we don't have any background noise. I'm gonna ask, do you want me to do the roll call, Maureen? Or would you like to do?
Neither. I can do it.
Okay, we're gonna ask Maureen to take the roll call. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so John Michael O'Brien.
He's absent.
Absent. Diane Gersey asked to be excused.
Yep.
Timothy Ziegma asked to be excused.
Sorry.
Ryan Rogan.
Present.
Sandra Coppola. Scott Hamel.
I have not heard from him, so absent, I guess.
Kim and Beely.
Here.
Peter Zerboza, alternate, asked to be excused. Andrew Legnani, alternate.
I did not hear anything from him, so absent.
And Steve Biella Jr.
I'm here virtually. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, thank you.
So we have a call, I'm a call.
Okay, we have a call. And we do have, I just wanted to let you folks know that we've had some people who've asked to be postponed. So let me just take care of that upfront. On the public hearings, item B, which was the proposed amendment to the zoning regulations for attorney Dennis Senna Viva on behalf of Red Lease LLC for special permit uses on self-storage facilities. The applicant has asked to be postponed to the next meeting, which will be June 2nd. Also, under Old Business, the site plan application, which is item A for Thomas Pokemall for improvements on a business property, portion of property on, at 178 New Britton Road, has also asked to be postponed. And also, again, so noting under Old Business, item C, which again is the self-storage facilities, that is postponed as well. So if you are joining us and you had interest in either one of those two, they have asked to be postponed, and we will not be discussing them at all today. All right, moving on. For the review of the minutes for May 19th, did we all receive copies of the minutes? Do we have any corrections or anything else like that?
And all four of you were here.
Yeah, all four. And have any problems, Steve Biella? Did you have any issues with the minutes for the 19th of May?
No, everything looks good, Chairman, Chairwoman. Thank you.
Brian, did you have a chance to review them? And do you have any comments or corrections? Or anyone wanna make a motion? I mean, obviously, we've been postponing this as well, if you wish.
Nothing is jumping out of the air.
I'd make a motion to, in a minute. Okay, Sandy has a motion to approve the minutes. And we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Brian. Further discussion than all those in favor, aye. Steve Biella. Steve?
I'm, I'm working on it, I'm sorry. Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the request for bond reductions and bond releases. The first item A is the request for Patrick Snow for a bond release at Fisher's Court through 19 Main Street, East Berlin. How are we set with the bond reduction?
We, so we evaluated the site. The Deputy Director of Public Works went out and found that the three rain gardens continue to need some work, so he's recommending a reduction to 25% from $27,032 to $6,758. So a reduction as opposed to a release.
So the reduction is down, I'm sorry, the reduction is down.
Is two to 25% or $6,758.
Okay. All right, can I show us any questions on that? And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to reduce the bond to $7,000, no, $6,758 for 25% of the user.
Okay, terrific, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Further discussion than all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Naye.
Naye, okay. All right, so that would fail the bond reduction. All right, we failed to reduce it. Do we need to say the reason why? Not really, no. Okay, the next is a request for Jeffrey Res- Lar Estates of Berlin LLC for bond release reduction. And what do we have on Mr. Reslar?
Okay, so in your supplemental packages, you do have a summary of the bonds that can be reduced or released. So I'm gonna comment on the releases first. If you, do you all have, I know Steve does not have it, but the rest of you. Actually, I can show it, probably. You give me one minute. Hold on. Which makes a lot more sense for those participating online. It's the reason we spend time scanning. So, item on this list, number two, Phase Three Madabassik Gravity Sewer Connection. Number four, Phase Four Water Main. And number five, Phase Four Sanitary Sewer, were all evaluated and may be released based on the inspection by engineering. And then Phase Three Erosion and Sedimentation Control Bond, reduced to $19,437. Phase Four Erosion Control Bond, reduced to $24,282, which represents 25% of the initial value. And the Phase Four Site Bond, reduced to $118,044, which is 25% of the value. Is the staff recommendation.
Okay. Any, any questions? So the $19,000, the reduction down to $19,337 is for Phase Three?
Phase Three Erosion and Sedimentation Control Bond.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
It's in this summary. I can actually highlight the.
All right, Commissioner, do we have any questions for our finer? Do we have any motions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to go with staff recommendations as far as bond reductions.
Okay. All right, so we had a motion by Brian Rogan. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, terrific, thank you, Sandy. And further discussion, any questions, Steve? Because I know you're online.
No questions, thank you.
All right. Okay, so all, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, and Steve, just for the record, because I couldn't hear your vote, is it, were you in favor of releasing the bonds?
And reducing.
Or reducing by, per staff?
Aye. Per staff, per staff, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, so moving, so all four. All right, so we're good with that. All right, onto new business. We have the special event application of Alex Lusickall. Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC were wrecked at temporary 20 by 410 for the retail sale of Connecticut illegal sparkles and ground-based fountains for the sales date of June 22nd, 2022, through July 5th, 2022, at 869 Mill Street. All right, this is our item under new business. And I believe we have somebody here to address the commission. Come on down and use the microphone if you can. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Eric Yan. And I'm here applying for that application for the Keystone Novelties.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or concerns? Well, the paperwork has been sent in, as I know.
And which parcel of property is this on Mill Street? This is where?
It's a, it's a, I'm not from the area, but I just, I went and looked at it. And it, this is a big road, Mill Street, I believe it is.
Oh, okay.
Can I describe it?
Okay, Mill Street Designers there?
Right, and it's, it's like a triangle. There's other establishments already there. And I guess something about parking. There was a, I saw a question brought up about parking in there.
So, so can I summarize quickly?
No.
So this is the multi-tenant shopping plaza that Uncle Dee's is in, as well as a liquor store. There's a couple of uses in there. The proposed tent location is at the northwest corner of the site, which is kind of a dead end of the parking area, north of the exit driveway on that side. And. Sure we have that.
Is it located near the water field?
So it's up near the corner of Beckley and Berlin Street. Yes. So here's the, here's the view of, from the GIS. So you'd be driving along Mill Street here at the bottom of your screen, coming from East Berlin and going towards Route 9, I have, towards Route 9, yeah. Then Beckley Road goes up to, to the north at the top of the screen, is going towards the fairgrounds. And you can see on this view, and I can bring up the actual GIS if the view is better, but that this parking lot, Uncle Dee's is over in this area. And the parking lot wraps the building. There's an exit, entrance, exit, just to the south of the area that they are proposing to put the tent.
In the corner of the property.
Right, right. Out near the road. So this is a new location for the same applicant that you've seen for multiple years on the Berlin Turnpike?
And they've had a great history on the turnpike.
You, you actually, already earlier this year, approved their site at, is it? I'm not gonna remember the, the address. I think it's 1943, is that clear? Okay, so. Just that the commission acknowledged whether or not there is, you know, whether or not they're satisfied with that location and the amount of parking. It's just something that you've typically looked at because they do take parking spaces from the site. So that's the effect it's having.
It was a pedal power there.
Yeah.
They were out of business, so we have, you know, we got their parking spots.
Yeah. I think also the last business on that building toward Beckley was actually a little package store. And I don't really think it's a busy. But I mean, after that, then you do that part there. All right, yeah, I don't see staff have any problems with those.
No, I will note that we did have the staff comments with regard to the permitting and the fire marshal, building inspector, you know, tent permits required. This applicant is quite familiar with those procedures, but we do like to include them. And that the, if you look at their plan, it shows he has a, what area did he call it? An exclusion area around the tent. And just because of the way the parking lot goes, with that being a dead end, I would think some sort of barrier so people don't get themselves in there and find they have to go into the exclusion area. And whether it's cones, something that just delineates from where cars can traverse so that they do stay away and out of the area. Because you might get trapped in there if you're, if, because you're beyond the driveway.
So the cones would be?
Just to keep, because you, you're marking this as the exclusion area, and this is an exit drive, you're using the parking here. Just keep cars from getting, having to get down there and then make U-turns and three-point turns and everything else to get out of it and likely end up in your exclusion area. Yeah.
Well, the good thing is, is that it's definitely after the exit or entrance.
Right, you have the exit there and the tents.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then there's a space in between that there'll be no, nobody going close to the tent. Where it's there on the top left. It's 20 feet, I believe.
Oh, right, right. So you have to have clear space around the tent on all sides. For the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, he's gonna come down and check it. If he says it's a no, it's a no.
Yeah, well, that's usually what happens.
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the staff comments.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rogan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay, Steve, thank you. Further discussion than all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, so move.
All right.
All right, congratulations.
All right, thank you, we'll see you next year.
Yeah, exactly.
Have a good one.
All right. All right, so moving into the public hearings, we have the Special Committee Application United, Unified Site Plan of Sebastian O'Speeney for the project 202-212 Mill Street, Mount 10-3 Block 86 Slots 5 and 5A in the CCD 2 Zone 4 residential apartments, fast food, at lot 5A, 202 Mill Street, and the addition of a drive-through at lot 538, 202 Mill Street. This is continued, we open this on April 21st, continue through May 5th. And here we are, mid-19th, bound to June 2nd. Okay, and we've done a lot of work with this, okay? And this public hearing, I think, is still correct. So, Commissioners, I mean, we've, we've poked and prodded as much as we possibly can for an assessment of this. I think I shared last time I was here, my only concern was that maybe we're putting too much into a little space. And I know that there is a problem with the culvert down there and with driving a sidewalk over it. But that's always been a problem. So that, I, I mean, I recognize that from the years past when they were building, sharing, and stuff like that. So I don't see that as a, as a big holdup. So, the other Commissioners, do you have comments or anything you'd like to share?
I do see that we've got the lighting plan. I know that was something we were waiting for as well, as far as the service for potentially the neighbors. So I did want to take a little bit of time to take a look at that. And then the other question I had is regarding the potential of the building with the apartments. And if there was going to be any affordable housing within those apartments.
I'm more than willing to do that. It, it's normally, is it 20% that's required? If, if we, I have five units proposed. So I have a unit that would be perfect for that, I think. But I don't know, I'm not familiar with the regs for that, that's the only thing.
Maureen, is there, is there, is there a set percentage that we have? I mean.
I have a set percentage, generally, preferably upon 20%.
That's what I was, okay.
But there's nothing set in the rules.
That's what I thought, because I'm like, 20% set up kind of there, so.
But that'd be, that's five units, that'd be one unit.
Right.
So this, the statute is now 30% to, for the goal. Well, that's, if, they all count, though. If you have 30, it doesn't.
It's 15, remember 15%. 80%, maybe 15%, 60%. So, yeah, but if, if you're just asking him to do percent aside, then, yeah, you could, I mean, 20% is, and is indicating that he has a new property. It'll be suitable for us, so.
All right, I imagine there's guidelines to help you with setting the rent, but.
Yes, you would do an affordability plan on it. And Maureen offered these guidance. She would give you a sample.
And what we would do, and, and it is reflected in my staff report, if, should the commission and the applicant decide that that's fair, is that the affordable guidelines, your, your restrictive plan and the deed all be reviewed by staff and corporation counsel prior to filing on the land records, which would all happen prior to occupancy of the units so that we can get that set on the record.
I can find that language somewhere.
Yeah, well, we, the, the town staff will walk you through that.
And then from what I can see, I'm sorry, as far as the architectural is gone, so is it kind of pretty much mirroring what the current Sharon Elizabeth's?
A little bit different because Sharon Elizabeth's has vertical dining, and it will have flabber, the party board. And then up in the peak, I wanted to do something a little bit more decorative. It takes, I think, is what we're talking about there.
Yeah, okay.
The window kind of mirrors what's at Sharon Elizabeth's. It has a square window. I thought it would be kind of neat to do.
We are in a public hearing, so is there anyone who wishes to address? Yes, sir.
Chris Edge, Porticus Road. Sorry, just wanted to get back in touch. I've had a couple brief conversations about the concept of the drive-through at the site here. Two different parties have expressed general interest. Neither one would be a late-night operator. I know that was part of the concern. It would not be guaranteed either one would go in, but I know the neighbors and some of the late-night stuff is concerned. The two people I'm talking to, I don't believe either one would be beyond probably the regular working day or slightly beyond. But there wouldn't be any until 1:00 AM drive-through with two people I'm talking to. I just want to let you know that again, no guarantee, but just the two initial interests I had would be really, really during business hours. So just want to let you know that.
That's true, because, that's, you know, that's a good thing and also for the neighborhood and also for the safety of the large, small.
Absolutely, I think, again, if we're looking at something that is really, really high volume, yes, maybe either one of these, I think, would be really high volume. And I think it would be fair.
Okay.
Thank you. So the special permit, now that it's placed, would we have curfew to a few of those hours?
To, to condition the approval on limiting the hours. And it's entirely appropriate to ask the applicant if they would agree to that as well, of course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was my next question. I was, was it, will we be involved in property restriction on the hours? Or give us a defined time, which?
I, you know, I, Chris has been out pounding the pavement and people, some have asked him which, if, what's going on with this project and sort of thing, that sort of thing. It is my intention to put my daughters in there in a coffee shop. Whether or not that pans out, I don't know, but she really does want to do it. She would need early warning. She would need, you know, 7:00, 8:00 AM.
Hmm, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
I think we're more concerned, like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're more concerned about night time hours.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't want her in there at night time. And I, I, I would be more than willing to put that in writing because it's, it's helpful in case I do bring in, you know, it doesn't pan out and one of Chris's people does. I don't want anybody there, you know?
While we're on public record, would you mind giving us an hour? Are you comfortable?
I, I'm guessing 8 o'clock, 8, 9, I don't know, I, 8 or 9 o'clock? I don't know what you folks would feel comfortable with. I, I, I'm just kind of shooting by the hip because I hadn't given it any thought. I do know that I don't want people around there at night. It's just not that type of business.
Well, plus you have to take into consideration you have people who are in your living.
Exactly.
And so they want, they don't want to listen to the squad class. They don't want to listen to the, the arguments or the radios, the people, you know, in queue.
So I mean, what would you think would be a reasonable time?
I mean, seeing as there's a squad class and I would, and the neighbors, I would probably say earlier would be better, so.
I mean, I was thinking even 8 is reasonable. Because if someone's coming off a late shift or wants to run there quick, and I think, you know.
Especially since it's 8:00.
Exactly, I think most people are kind of settled at that time, and.
I, I think that's more than reasonable. I do, I think 8 o'clock is reasonable and, you know, in the morning.
Well, the morning is when you're gonna, that's when people want to wake up. At night, they want to.
Right.
I don't want.
So you're not, I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be 4:00 AM. It's probably not gonna be 6:00 AM, but there's always a chance it could be. I don't want to, I don't want to restrict her that much if she really does get this going in morning business.
Excuse me one second, I just have you move around so that you're actually talking into the microphone because it really doesn't record on Zoom unless the microphone is working well. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, it sounds like we'll be able to work things out and hammer out a good agreement.
Okay.
All right, my only comment is, is I look at, I, I like the way you kind of, you know, the renderings that we see so far. I like the fact that your roofline seems to overhang the building. It doesn't tend to be the building. Um, I like the fact that your roofline seems to overhang the building, it doesn't tend to be the building, which is good. That's good for, you know, drainage or whatever. Um, I was looking at the. The sign in the building that actually has the drive-through window. Um, I don't know, I, I guess it's because I see all the pretty windows all the other places and I see this big spans of just. You know, your whore and then you have a window up here. Is there any way that we can maybe perhaps put another window on this side or something? Um, just to break up the, the solid, yeah, that's the one, the one on top, yeah, that one there.
That is actually a mistake. Um, on that plan, there is a window and I never caught that. So on that, and I'm, as you're looking at that side, the drive-through would be, uh, um, to the left end. It is a stairway, so we can't put a, um, can't put a window there, but then next to the stairway is my office. So that has a, an awning window that's probably four by two, so it breaks it up a lot. I'm sorry, that's not on there, I didn't put that.
Yeah, it looks like your, uh, it looks like the architecturals, the, have sort of, um, like a little crown molding or awning like effect. Or rain guard above the other windows, so that'll be dressed up all the way around.
Yeah.
Um, using the same kind of thing.
And I do, I do want it to feel, you know, I don't want to go in and make it feel like different style property. I like the new wooden feel.
Well, you have a very, it's, it's sort of funny because I looked at the, the lower, the lower left-hand picture there with, with our elevation. So with the pillars and everything, I don't know, I, the first thing I thought was something out of the OK Corral. Yeah, I do, I do, I like that. It looked like you had thorns going there and like a little sidewalk, it looks like a. With a boardwalk kind of a, a look to it, but I don't know if that was your intention or not, but that's the way I just reacted to it. So, you know, kudos to you for that. All right, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Now would be the not time to do it. Steve Byel, I know you're online and thanks for the video. Do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Thanks for being there. Okay, and Maureen, so onto you.
So I have several things, um, you did get the staff comments that are really just a summary of, um, most of what you heard. Although there's a few things that I'd like to clarify, um, with regard to it, um, of course, um. You've already discussed that, um, the affordable units, um, that you'll have to determine whether or not. Your, how you'll go on a waiver of the sidewalks along Mill Street. And I wanted to point out an issue in the, um, interpretation of the regulations with regard to the lighting on site. And I'd like to flip to that screen. So, um. They, they have proposed the slim wall packs, um, along the driveway. The exit driveway, um, drive-through side of the existing building and on the garage. We have, um, in our regulations that the lighting be shielded. Be dark sky or, um. See. Shielded, full code up, cut off and no light trespass. And these, um, light fixtures seem to meet that with the shielding all around of the light pack. However, the next sentence in the regulation states that, um, wall packs are not allowed. I believe, and I went over this with our engineering department as well. And we're thinking that they, um, when you look up wall packs, you also find some. Lights that maybe traditionally had full glow and glare all around them. Um, more like a, I, I'm gonna call it a fluorescent light put on the wall so that you see it. Light on all sides and or extend out into the area. And the, this light seems to be just what is described as shielded, full cut off, no light trespass. And intended to illuminate the area beneath it that's walking and drives. Driveways and garages and doorways. Oh, they've also got them, um. A different version of the wall pack actually is these lights, um, at the building entrances. So, um, I'd just like a determination from the commission to agree with that interpretation.
Matt's been calling, I figured he took. Over on this end of the train yard now. Let me look.
That's okay. Um, so that's an interpretation, but I, I believe this, this, um. Light fixture as described. Meets the requirements despite having the terminology of being called a wall pack. Again, your determination to make. Um, just note as we do in all the, um. Site plan applications that signage was not reviewed for compliance with the regulations because we don't have the specific signage, et cetera. And signage will require separate building permits and include, which includes then the zoning review for compliance with that. Um. The, we did not hear from Warrington Fire District with, um, I missed type that and put Warrington Water District. Warrington Fire District, um, so, and will serve letters will be required, um, prior to construction for each building. And, um. Just so the town can be ensured that public utilities will be provided. Um, the, and that's consistent with the town engineer's comments as well. The town engineer also made a comment, um, that was reflective of, um. A free regulation amendment in twenty nineteen with regard to the retaining wall. Um, his comment should have read, any retaining wall over four feet tall must be designed and certified by a licensed engineer. That was amended in two thousand and nineteen and does not need to come back to the commission. It's technical. And also that the whole, the site was calculated for parking based on the. Free amendment to the regulations with regard to fast food parking. So they have provided more parking than would be required because. The parking requirement for fast food was reduced to one for one twenty-five, so there's adequate parking. Um, so I noted on the plan, um, and here you can, on, on this, the plan that's online, you can see it now. Um, perimeter landscaping has been provided as well as, um, planting along the driveway for the new building. Um, this area on the east side of the site. Is noted, that's where the existing driveway is and will be removed. They've noted on the plan that that will be replaced with this sidewalk, you know, an internal circulation sidewalk from the parking lot. And then just lawn, um, and we have the addition of islands that show no landscaping. And I wanted to point that out to the commission, so there around this building and just. Um, for a determination as to whether the landscaping is adequate. I would think you might want some additional decorative landscaping and you can work with staff on that if you're.
Because of the islands and stuff, and I mean, I know it's tough with the snow and everything, but even if you put a nice tree in there. Um, with lawn, then you get the shade for the cars and stuff like that. And also, um, the fact that you probably not gonna have to go over that culvert with any kind of sidewalk or something. Maybe we can kind of dress up the front of that building as it comes in.
Sure, I, I like that.
Just saying, yeah.
Okay, all right, terrific. And, um, all right, so here we are, this is a public hearing, so we have any other comments or? Any questions or we have, uh, any motions to make? At this point?
There's nobody else out there, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing belongs to Lauren, and do we have a second? All right, well, Sandy beach it to it, Steve. All right, um, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Public hearing, okay, moving on. Thank you, Steve. Um, all right, so now we're gonna go into, as noticed, the, the storage has been postponed, going into old business. We'll postpone, and so we're back, we're back on the old business, uh, with Sebastian Elspini. All right, so, uh, we talked about affordability and we're perhaps gonna get one unit there. Uh, we talked about the landscaping, about the design of the building, the missing window. Staff has lots of, uh, has some comments, apparently we're all sort of touching on the same base. Um, anything else, commission, that we want to address?
Not so much to address, but I just think comments and, you know, I think, um. Mr. Malins, he needs to come before several times and each time he's brought things up or citizens have come and brought things up. He's been more than willing to listen, trying to accommodate and address things and personally, I just want to say that's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, good point, good point.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
I agree with those comments, um. So I'll go ahead then and make the motion to approve with staff comments and I want the emphasis on a few things. That being twenty percent affordable, which you'll work with staff to make sure it's all done proper. The waiver on Mill Street, um, I would like him to work with staff and get approval on those drive-through hours. Um, when they open to close with no later than eight PM. Um, review on signage. Um, I, I can get, my personal, I think it's okay that opposed lighting does fit. Our compliance and that I also ask that he works with staff on additional landscape.
Well, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
We'll second.
All right, then we're holding for us, Steve, thank you. So do we have further discussion or anything else that we missed? I think we worked this all pretty good. All right, so all those in favor? All right, opposed? So moved. Yes, congratulations. I know Sandy's absolutely right. We just know that you're gonna do an excellent job. If you have any questions or concerns or whatever, please don't hesitate to contact Maureen.
I really do appreciate it very much. I want to make it, you know, I want to make it nice.
Yeah, and I want you to get that window so that.
Tomorrow showing it's there. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to buying my first couple of car. But in the morning, okay, so we're done with all that other stuff, so now we're good to move on to commission business, isn't this fun? So, um, the, I guess we're, we're into the. Just the way I roll, I'm sorry. So good night, Mr. Agent. Okay, so commission business, we have the discussion and direction to staff regarding regulations relating to the twenty twenty-one legislation. Which involves cannabis, accessory dwelling units, existing regulations in the opt-out process. And also residential parking requirements can and out of process. All right, so commission, here we go. And we have Jennifer who's with us, Jennifer Law, sorry attorney, and do you want to.
So, uh, well, when, uh, we were last talking about this at the last meeting. We talked about, you know, how we were gonna proceed on this. Um, I, I'm sad to see that there's not more commissioners here, they do have some concerns about that. Um, that we don't have more, more folks to get into this, so I don't know whether, um. You would prefer me to just kind of give you some thoughts rather than going back into sort of that primer on cannabis that we had talked about. To refresh everybody's recollection, um, you are still in the moratorium period. You passed the moratorium on November eighteenth of last year. It was a nine-month moratorium, I think. Based upon the filing, it takes you either to August or September.
August twenty-second is the way we posted it.
So, um, you still have, you know, sometimes a question becomes, you know, I, I think. What process do we want to follow at this point, um, to get a, to, to get you to that position where you feel like. Uh, you've reviewed everything that you need to and you can make some decisions about whether or not you want to allow certain cannabis establishment uses in town or not. So, um, just as a quick, uh, refresher, um, you'll recall, so the palliative use. Um, statute, which was passed some years ago now, it's hard to believe because I remember when that was going through the drafting process. Um, that created only two cannabis establishment uses, a dispensary, of, of course medicinal marijuana. And then, um, producer, um, obscene. So now with MIRACA, with the recreational adult use. Statute, we have nine additional uses, um, there's cultivate, a micro cultivator, and transporter, and delivery. Um, service and, and hi- a hybrid retailer. And so much of the discussion has really focused around, uh, the retail and cultivation uses. But you, you do want to consider whether or not you want to allow any of those other uses as well. Because I think it's gonna be important when you do act on this, that you consider all of them. And if, if, uh, you only want to proceed with allowing certain uses at, at this point. That would be put a prohibition in, in your regulation with regard to the remainder. So, um, that's important. One thing I do want to point out, and this is, this is something that is a new development, it's a very important to know. Is that coming out of the last legislative session, you may, you may recall when you had the combined meeting with town council and it was. There was Jeff Donofrio who gave you the presentation, um, on the MIRACA. Um, you'll recall that there was mention of a density cap, um, on retail and cultivation. And it was, it was one of each of those uses for every twenty-five thousand residents that you have in town. Um, that density cap has been removed from the statute. So there is no longer a density cap with the passage of Public Act twenty-two dash one oh three. Um, and that has been signed into law by the governor, um, and had been transmitted to him, um, on May seventeenth. So I think that, that, that next week. So, um, that's a very important to keep in mind. Um, you know, consideration of, uh, you know, if you're gonna allow a particular use to put a, a cap. If you so desire to put a cap, um, on, uh, the, you know, the uses that, that you determine that. That you want to permit in town. So, um, I mentioned that because I think that, you know, that there, there have been some. Other changes as well, uh, changes to advertising that are contained in, in both Public Act twenty-two one oh three and twenty-two one oh four. Um, that are, I think are important to, you know, to consider. Um, because I know that there are some concerns with advertising that have been expressed in the municipalities and whatnot, so. Um, but I think probably the best thing to do is, uh, because your commission does really tend to have very busy objectives. Maybe we need to, you know, set a special meeting date when the majority of folks said, look, we could do it fully remote. Um, they have adopted, you may, may be aware of this or not, but, um. The statute that extended the, the fully remote and the hybrid meeting formats through the end of April. Has actually been adopted into law at this point, so you can have a fully remote meeting if you'd like to. If that, if you think that that would be more convenient for everybody, um, you know, happy to set that up. But I think we should do a special meeting that focuses on cannabis. Um, and also focuses on accessory apartments and opt-out, that's additional moments of those topics as well. But I just, again, I wanted to point out to you that density cap issue. Um, and the other thing that I think is important to point out is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the lottery. And I can give you, um, some information about, uh, in terms of press releases and whatnot. About the limitations on the number of, uh, different licenses they're gonna issue. Because you, you may have seen, I mean, there's been this article. about the limitations on the number of, uh, different licenses they're gonna issue, because you, you may have seen, I mean, there's been these articles out there. Um, they received thousands and thousands, I mean, I think the last, um, article that I saw was fif- over fifteen thousand applications, because they didn't limit the number of applications that any uh, individual entity could submit. So, um, you know, there are so many applications received. Um, but I have some, some releases that sort of better explain sort of the rollout, what they're doing with regard to that. And there have been some concerns about the equity piece, the social equity piece, and they've done some things to address that as well. But, um, one thing that I think is misunderstood, and there's so much to this, I mean, Mirac itself, you know, three hundred and three pages long, um, the additional public acts, I think, um, Public Act twenty-one oh three is probably another eighty, ninety pages, and so there's a lot there, uh, no doubt, you know, to, to review, and I get that. Um, and, you know, I'm happy to, uh, summarize it, if you, if you think that that would be worthwhile to sort of give you a summary to, with page numbers and stuff to focus your review.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because to me, you know, the social equity piece is the social equity piece, and, and that's a big part of the law, and then the criminal um, aspects, you know, the changes to the penal code are things that, you know, don't involve you as well, so you know, I can guide you in terms of early focusing, you know, pages that you should review. Um, and, and then there's a lot about, um, also treatment, um, treatment programs and education as well. Um, but, uh, you, you know, it, it is important, you know, to focus on, and, and, and it's so much, it's and I've read it, and I've read it, and I've been, you know, talking to people about it and going to meetings and presenting it, and, and so I get it, I do, but I, you know, I wanna support you as best as I can, um, in helping you to understand. So, um, you know, that's something that I can do, is kind of narrow the field for you. Um, there are, uh, regs too, um, that have come out of the Department of Consumer Protection. Um, and so you could see really what's required as far as, for instance, security. Um, if you're unfamiliar with, with, uh, the, you know, the, the security provisions for how they keep, you know, the current producers, how they keep, um, those sites secure. Um, it, you know, there is a lot to it. Um, I also wanna offer this because I know very early on I had made the recommendation to you that you probably do wanna hear from, uh, potentially from prospective, yeah, so the uses that you're interested in in particular. You, you probably want to hear from, uh, prospective business owners, um, and possibly some of your department heads. Um, and so what I've done, y- you know, is specifically raised to him, and I did invite, um, prospective business owners who had contacted the town, and Maureen has probably been contacted by some folks as well, um, to come and address, uh, the commission, and we did it at the, we did it at the council level too. Um, but, uh, to talk to you about the business, because I think that, again, uh, it's, it's, it's an important thing that this is not something that you're probably familiar with, and you're deciding about whether or not to submit this use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think you, you know, you probably want, and it feels stronger that you need to have some very specific information, or wanna ha- take, sort of, take that opportunity to ask any questions that you have. So that's something else that we could do. Um, you know, in terms of department heads, uh, you may wanna hear from police and fire. You know, you may wanna hear from, you know, your youth services, your community services folks, and you may also wanna hear, um, your health director, your health district. So, um, you know, I, again, I, I don't know what folks are thinking at this point, and maybe you wanna have that, just, again, when we do, um, i- if, you know, whether we continue this discussion on to your next meeting, and I can come, you know, to that, or whether, or whether, you know, we do select a special meeting, that could be something that's part of your discussion. Um, if you wanna bring sort of everybody in and see what people think about inviting, uh, people to address it.
I like the idea, because we never know how quickly our agendas will move. I mean, we've been very blessed, I think, because we've really kind of cut right through it.
But your last couple have been very long.
Very long, and it's not fair to the commission or representatives or anyone else, so I think we should do it as a special meeting. And this way we can do our due diligence on each of the items, I think. I mean, we're not, you know, left out tired either.
Yeah, serves our full attention.
I do remember having, when we touched base on the, uh, accessory, uh, dwelling, and I spoke with Maureen about this, and spoken with her about the other one.
Parking.
Yeah, the parking one, and pretty much our regu- I mean, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm very comfortable with the opt-out option for both of those. And, uh, because I think that we work as a commission
Yeah.
and, and do a very good job, and I don't think that these restrictions really apply to us, we're sort of ahead of that game. Um, so for me, the cannabis focus on, and I think that would be more of a, a bigger concern. And, you know, I mean, we all have our opinions of it, and, but there's, like you said, there's different levels, so I think if we could just set up a, uh, just a meeting regarding that thing, that one subject, and just invite, you know, this, uh, what do you call them, stakeholders, um, into the meeting, and then we can, we as the commission can ask questions and, and we can try to figure out what's the best way to approach this. What do we wanna do that's gonna be good for our town? I mean, I don't wanna do something just because everybody else is. I, 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 I just sort of wanna do something that's gonna still protect the atmosphere that we have in town. And I do know that, um, folks who are on the growing end of it have encouraged us as a commission to do a sidewalk, to go and visit these, these facilities, because they're not like a greenhouse, they are usually like a manufacturing building. There is security, you don't even know what they're doing inside that building. Everything is very, very restricted and very tightly licensed. And they've, they've sworn that if I, if I take the commission there to look at it, with all the regulations that they have regarding the growing aspect of it, that my perception of what I think could happen on these growing sites would be, would be changed. And so that's something else we might wanna look at, is taking, you know, take up the invitation to go or look at something like this to see how it's done. But, I think a special, well, I think a special meeting would be great, but just about this one subject.
Okay.
And because then we can really laser and focus on it, because obviously you've done tons of work on it.
I have a lot of paper, I do.
You have a lot of paper and probably a very good presentation.
And, um, so, so Jeff and I have been tracking, uh, you know, what other communities are doing, so. Um, and I will say, you know, it's all, it's across the board. Yeah, there's prohibitions, you know, there's outright prohibitions, there's, um, you know, uh, some towns that are gonna allow everything, you know, and then so, and everything in between. So, um, you know, one of the things I think is important to, um, part, part of the discussion, you know, because you're in the business of zoning. You know, that's, that's what you do, is considering if you're gonna allow a particular use, you know, are, obviously part of your reg is gonna be, well, where.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's where, uh, your, your staff's input will be invaluable, um, and essential.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have a big, do that kind of alone.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd be in support of doing a special meeting.
I'm so grateful, but they, a couple days.
In talking about the restriction, security, et cetera, um, I'm assuming that regarding, regardless if you're there growing for medicinal or for recreational, the restrictions and securities are gonna be the same, so.
Um, I believe that is absolutely the case. Um, I think that there are, you know, there are different requirements to, to, uh, for, for medicinal, for palliative use. Um, obviously, there, you know, there are portions of the statute that go to that use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will point that out. Again, I'll give you a key, if you will, to it, so you know what pages contain what content. Um, I think that, that may be the best thing to do. Um, also, a link to the, to the regulations, so you can see the provisions with regard to security, um, that, again, DCP drafted. Um, and I know, you know, are in place, because I've heard, I've heard the presentation of specifically a, a current, uh, medicinal dispensary in New Haven, um, and the security that they have, very, I have very detailed presentation with regard to that. So I can give you some information to, when I, you know, when I present it as well. But I think it's important, I don't, I don't wanna dominate the conversation. So in terms of choosing the D, I, you know, I don't wanna do it next week, I wanna get the information out to you, give you a couple weeks, you know, to at least kind of make your way through it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, kind of digest it, and, and I, I, again, I know you sat through the, I'm sure, excellent primer that Jeff gave you as well, because he's, he's been out there too, and
I wasn't.
Um, learning and so forth, it's so, um, but I think that that's, that's a good way to go.
Yeah, I mean, you can give us the information, if you could give me like a cover page with those highlighted sections that you really want us to focus.
Um, how is your schedule? How, how is your schedule? Is it the same? I mean, do we want June on a Thursday?
June has been absolute, is absolutely like the most, um, most meetings on the schedule, because we do have those P O C B meetings that actually have lightened your load a little bit with them being the workshops and, and thematic meetings, um, but added three. Um, and I have a special Z B A meeting next week, so, um, there's just a lot of meetings. The, we do have the extra Thursday in, um, June.
Yeah.
Um, which is the thirtieth, that's a Thursday. Um, let's see, we keep
And, and
August twenty-second.
You can extend your moratorium, there, there are municipalities doing that, you know, that
Yeah.
To give yourself time to draft the regulation that you want, and, you know, and to put it to public hearing and act upon it. You know, you, again, when you have the public hearing, you may take in some comments and, and say, you know, we want some things changed, so, you know, don't worry about that, because you can extend the moratorium if you need to do that.
Good.
I think, but I think, you know, you, you need to make a decision.
But if we
At this point.
If we did something on the thirtieth, would that just be acquiring information, or would that be with, you know, the stakeholder?
If, if I wouldn't mind, I would say maybe give it some time and pick, um, at our next meeting, and we can have more of our commissioners, and we know when people are available.
Well, our next meeting will be till the sixteen.
Well, yeah, uh, it's just four of us deciding, or seven or nine people, I don't
We can do, we, we can do a poll as well, I mean, if, if we have the responses, some if take a, if, if, I would suggest that you propose a few days, and then we hold the, the group at large as well as any stakeholders, and maybe, um, you know, I'm thinking, how long do you think it takes to get stakeholders to come in? Yeah, 'cause they're excited about it, yeah. Yeah, it's what they're doing, it's what they're doing right now, they've made the, the effort to be, be available.
As a special meeting, we can actually make it be earlier, especially on Thursday, because then it won't slice into a workday for these people.
Mm-hmm.
Because a lot of people work till seven, so if we started it at maybe, I know it's gonna be tough, maybe five thirty or six at least then.
With the work schedule, I mean, I'll be honest, seven is becoming troublesome. You know?
No pray for rain? And Steve's pointing his finger at me, yeah. No, I mean
Yes, seven o'clock is, is
Yeah, no, I
It's still light out at eight o'clock, I mean, myself and Brian work outside, so
Yeah.
We need all the daylight we can get.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's gonna be daylight on every single day until about late October. As we move into daylight, same time for fall back. But, I mean, we have to, we have to at least get the ball rolling, and at least, e- even if we just start the conversation. Um, but I mean, if you wanna start the meeting at seven or whatever, I mean, we can work it out, I was just trying to show a little mercy for the guys that were
Again, if you wanted to just draw a poll, um, preferably for me, you can seven, it's an hour.
Well, okay, so we should, we should offer them like two or three days to choose from, so
Keep a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Go with the majority.
Exactly.
That would, I, I'll make that.
All right, so thirtieth of June would be one. And then as we go into July, obviously, we have, uh, our first meeting of March is on the seventh. Um, unless you wanted to switch off and do a different night, like a Wednesday night, but then they would be earlier, because the time clock goes to seven thirty. Um, you'd have to go to either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth of July, or is there any other day that's better? A day of the week that's doable. Month, well, we could do, uh, change to Monday, or we could do it on Monday. I mean, we can look at it on Monday too. Which one? The, like, the eleven?
I, I personally have, um, historic district scheduled for the eleven. Um, they do cancel if we don't have any business, so it just can't say whether, and whether I can not be present for our portion and, and join the meeting. I, I can come and go, I mean, it's your decision, and I can listen to the, um, anything that's happened, yeah, so I don't think I should mandate the reg.
Can't you even do like, uh, Monday to twenty-seventh of, uh, June? I mean, we're looking at the thirtieth, we can suggest the twenty-seventh. Uh, we can suggest, um, uh, for that matter, you can suggest a Wednesday, like, uh, the sixth of July, maybe. I mean, I'm just afraid if we keep
I have a con- I have a conflict on the first and second Wednesdays.
Okay, all right, so, all right. First week of July might be a couple of vacations.
Yeah.
I was even worried about the thirtieth on that account, because, but, maybe not, you know?
Right.
But it's the start of that holiday weekend, but it's Thursday, not Friday.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Okay, so June twenty-seventh. Um, which one, the twenty-ninth?
That's the Wednesday.
We can do the Wednesday. The twenty, okay, so there's three days in that week, is that good for you? Maureen?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, um.
So the twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth
Later, you know, as long as it's, you know, at least six, I have a dentist appointment in the afternoon, so I just have to get back.
Okay.
That's, you know, so.
All right. Yeah, I don't think it'll be
Well, we're gonna say seven, when, when we send out the email, we'll say seven.
I, I guess, yeah. But I'll have to, you'll have
And then, did you wanna pick a couple days in July?
Oh, I'm always afraid of going out too far, because I got that August deadline. Um, if we do July, um, I can do the eleventh, I could do the twelfth, I could do the thirteenth, the fourteenth. That would be the week after the holiday.
Which one, Sandy?
The first and third. Uh, first and second.
First and second, oh, okay.
So do you, do you wanna, why don't we stay away from the eleventh, so that Maureen can be present, wanna offer the twelfth and the fourteenth?
Conservation commission's the twelfth?
Okay.
The fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, uh, maybe what we'll do is if, you know, maybe we'll have people hold the fourteenth in addition to one of the June dates. Um, in case we need to use a second date, I think that would be a good idea to do that. And just get through this, yeah. Um, so just in terms of accessory apartments, I do, I do want to point something out to you, I'm just gonna give you, this is just a quick summary.
Steve, can you hear us okay? You can, okay, good. She's passing something out.
Yeah, so it's only, it's, it's just a presentation, I think that we went through the Public Act when it was passed
Yeah.
last year, and I, and I, and I gave you, uh, I'm sorry.
This is about the accessory apartment, well, I see.
Um, so, uh, remember Um, so uh, remember that two-thirds of planning and zoning has to vote to opt out, and two-thirds of the town council, because town council's your legislative body. So both bodies have to act to opt out, okay? And and really the most important thing that I wanna point out, um, you know, there's, there's obviously certain requirements, certain prohibitions. Um, and ultimately, if you don't opt out, then the content of the statute becomes your regulation. Okay, so yes, you have something on the books with access, with regards to accessory dwellings, okay? If you don't opt out, you have to repeal that, okay? And and adopt what's in the statute.
If we don't, if you don't opt out.
To the extent it conflicts, you gotta get rid of it if you don't opt out.
Yeah.
Okay, so please keep that in mind. The other thing, and I, I think this is probably the most, you know, um, critical thing to remember. And this is on uh, page three at the end, or at the end of the section that says, other provisions of the statute provide that, that last paragraph. If, no, the very, the last paragraph from the meeting, it says critically.
Yeah.
Um, if you do not opt out, subsection E of the statute, E dash two oh, states the following. A municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in subsections A to the inclusive of the section. Okay, so what that means by what I think is plain and unambiguous language, okay? Is that if, if you don't opt out, again, you have to, because the earlier part of that sub subsection, you have to adopt regulations and compliance. And you cannot change them, okay? Until they change the language at the legislature. That's the way I understand them.
Yeah, cuz I think.
So it's, 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 it's important to keep that in mind. That's, that to me is so important.
Yeah, cuz it really kind of ties your hands to that regulation.
Yes.
It doesn't give you the leeway for the ability to, um, yeah, wave or whatever.
Yeah, it's a lot of work for people to take care of it. If something arises, I I've done a lot of enforcement in the past twenty-five years for zoning, for building, for fire. Not just zoning, other court enforcement. And, you know, if something arises in terms of an enforcement issue and you feel like you need to change the way that I am interpreting that, again, I think it's very clear, is that you're not gonna be able to change that language until they change it from what you know.
And to say, what's they changing to, if they change.
And I think that's why I, I, when I look at these two items, I know that that's the way to go is to opt out. It's because it gives you, you, you're still in control, you still have that leeway, you still have that ability.
And the part, part of your affordable housing plan, I think the final part was circulated into the commission. You'll recall some of the things that you had with that committee, that a review of your accessory apartment regulations is one of the strategies.
Yeah.
So um, it's gonna be looked at, you know, anyway. I think you're, you know, you've committed as a commission to, to, you know, as part of your P O C D efforts as well, your update to your P O C D, to, to review. Um, it's as far as, you know, getting greater diversity of housing, you know, does it need, does it need some updating? So, um, and with regard to parking, I mean, the thing is about, about that is, is you've received, um, by my recollection, you've received expert testimony that conflicts with that. Um, you know, uh, you know, for studio and one bedroom having a leaning quarrying park space for two or more leaning quarrying two. And my recollection is, is, is that there is expert testimony that's out there. That, you know, the provisions across the state have received that conflicts with that. Um, so. That's your consideration.
Yeah, thanks a lot for that. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn, motion? Okay, see, it's a motion, last second. Thanks for being online, because when you do your waves and stuff, we know that you have a question. All right, and so just to mark it, it would be, um.
Eight twenty-four P M.
Eight twenty-four P M. All righty, and uh, Maureen, I'm sorry that you'll have to get all that stuff together to find out when we're gonna meet, that special hearing. But I think it would be really good if we were able to.
Oh, I think this needs due, due process and time to, to have everybody understand it.
Yeah.
It's complex.
If we do that, I know we're, now we're off, if we do that, that still allows us time, if we wanted to do a public hearing for input.
Absolutely, and then of course, we wanna make sure we extend our moratorium. And then of course, we wanna see, we wanna get that opt-out thing going as soon as possible. And uh, we may even, if we can get the full commission here in two weeks, we may just have it as a sidebar conversation um, with the commission, um, if the agenda's not too long, to get some direction going, so. We can get that off of our.
We can make it nice and simple. All right, I'm going to, did you, you voted to adjourn, everybody?
All right, Steve, uh, but yeah, Steve, before you, you, did you understand the dates that we have for discussion? That the calendar dates we're looking at, okay?
Yes, no problem, I'll be there.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Thanks, good night.
Good night. Thanks, Steve, all right, good night, good night.